It is now seven P M on Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty five, and I call the Bill Ricker Planning Board to order. Uh, first, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America. And to the real outlook for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Everybody can stay standing for a second. Just want a moment of silence. I had a recent loss in the family, so you know, just bow our heads real quick. Thank you. And so we'll start with a roll call vote, uh, to make sure everybody's here. Uh, Ms. Henderson?
I'm here.
Mr. Robertson?
I'm present. Thank you.
Mr. Samae. Mr. Drew.
Here.
Mr. Trubu.
Here.
Uh, um, Ms. Sadina said she might be able to make it, but she wasn't su- sure. So I'm just gonna call out her name to see if she's here. Ms. Sadina? If you're on Zoom, let us know. But maybe Kat can.
Sure, she's not on Zoom.
All right, perfect. So she's, uh, she will mark her as absent tonight, and we'll move forward unless she happens to show up. All right, uh, with that, uh, I guess the first item would be open mic. If anybody's here, uh, on Zoom, please, uh, put your hand up to speak on open mic. If anybody's here in the room, uh, just put your hand up or come up to the podium and let us know. So anybody on Zoom down there?
There are no hands on Zoom.
Perfect. All right, let's move on to the agenda.
First item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is a minor modification for eighty-six Lexington Road for the Mylar. Per request of the land court.
Good evening. Attorney Jim Jim Dangor for the applicants, the Smiths. Back in, um, August, the Board of Appeals was, um, gracious enough to grant a lot split at eighty-six Lexington Road. You folks were, uh, kind enough to to approve a B two minor subdivision off of that variance in December this year. And because this is registered land, there's a third level of review in addition to the Board of Appeals, you people. Uh, it's registered land. It's reviewed by the land court. So the land court engineer, the process to get a plan approved and the lot land court, uh, engineering department's kind of an onerous, um, undertaking, uh, we've worked, uh, our surveyor, uh, Mr. McDonald's worked with the, uh, land court engineer and, uh, has requested some very, very minor changes to the plan that you folks endorsed. First minor change was we had it as lots A and B. Um, uh, they want it as, uh, lots, um, uh, forty-two and forty-three. So that's one minor change. The the property was first registered nineteen forty-seven. The instrumentation is slightly different these days, so the instrument instrumentation that Mr. McDonald uses is a little more exact than it was in nineteen forty-seven. They picked up a one-tenth of one inch, um, you know, issue in in one corner. Uh, they picked up, uh, a a minor change in the, uh, the angle. That's the corner of Lexington Road and Lexington Farms Way. Uh, and, uh, that angle opened up just slightly. So one lot becomes sixteen square feet larger. The other lot became six feet square, uh, uh, larger. So we're following the direction of the land court. We're back to you folks. I did present the Mylar. Uh, Catherine made a, uh, a great observation that the Mylar that I gave you stated approval not required under subdivision control. This is a B two, so my role now is to go back to the engineer, get a, uh, get a, uh, a new signature block and then bring that A and, uh, uh, bring that B two plan back to you folks for endorsement. But to get there, I need your approval for that, those minor changes, that minor modification. Okay?
All right, sounds, uh, very simple. Uh, quickly go to the board, Mr. Drew.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Trubu?
No questions, no.
Mr. Samae?
No issues.
Mr. Robertson? None?
No questions.
Wonderful.
Mike? Anybody in the, uh, audience, uh, give, um, Zoom hands a minute if they wanna come in, but, uh, I doubt they will, so, um, Ms. Anderson?
I make a motion to approve the revised plan and endorse the revised Mylar.
Second.
Since we're all here, I guess it's a motion. Everybody in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Everybody against?
Wonderful.
Inanimately. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great.
Anything now?
No, I've I've gotta get that change, and it was a good pickup by your, your staff. All right, I'll pick I'll pick that up. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you. The second item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is a preliminary review of the application for an S P S P site plan special permit for the new recreation center on one twenty-one Lexington Road. Um, there's no need to open a preliminary review. That's what I understand.
Yes, well, yeah, you guys have the floor. Please come on up.
Can I share the screen?
Yes, it's ready for you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, uh, I'll introduce myself first. I am Dave Grab. I'm the Director of Recreation here for the town. I'm really excited to introduce, um, you to the project. Um, for those of you who, uh, are not as familiar with the Recreation Department, um, we are a department that services all demographics of the community, so we offer programs, uh, both young and old, every ability. Um, so it is something that, um, this project is something that will benefit the town as a whole. Um, I think a lot of that is shown by our success at town meeting. Um, this project was passed at a ninety percent clip, um, which we were really excited about. Um, here's just an example of things that, uh, we are currently offering. We offer everything from active programs, exercise programs, enrichment programs, art STEM, you name it. We try to offer it, um, whether you're one or one hundred. That's kind of our motto. We try to have something for everybody. Um, so getting into the project, what you see here is, um, what our ultimate goal, um, for this site, um, will be, um, due to some financial considerations and making sure we're prioritizing the highest items for us. Um, what you see on the backside will be at a later phase. Um, but what we're proposing for this project is what you see on the screen now. So what you see on the screen now is the Recreation Center. It has a splash pad down to the bottom right and a playground down to the bottom right as well. Um, that's kind of what will be situated on this site. Um, once this project is completed and will become, you know, the permanent home for the Recreation Department and and, um, all of our services. Here you see the floor plan. This is a floor plan that we're very excited about. We've had, um, front seat at the table for the entire design phase. Um, both myself, our Recreation Commission, as well as the town and the designers. Um, really quickly, just to kind of orient you to the building, um, we have two full-size basketball courts, two multipurpose rooms with a divider in it, so it can be one large space or two smaller spaces. We have a fitness dance, um, studio. We'll have a community room that will be available to, um, all users, not just recreation, um, as well as our office space and a small kitchen break room, as well as the, uh, locker rooms and restrooms that will, um, serve the use of the building. Um, again, this checks every box for us. Um, we're very excited about the opportunities that we'll be able to provide the community with a building such as this that we currently, um, don't have. So a zoomed-in shot here shows, um, what we'll be proposing for, um, outside amenities for this project. It includes, um, a splash pad. Those familiar with the current splash pad at Manning, it is getting up there in age and it is extremely popular. So this will allow us to have a secondary space for families that we can better accommodate, um, as well as, um, a new upgraded playground at this site to accommodate that neighborhood, but also, um, to supplement our camps and the uses that we'll be using it for as well.
All right. Thank you, Dave.
So, um, Mark Lumiere, Director of Permitting, I'm gonna, uh, kinda go through the rest of the project. Uh, it's just some facts about the project. It's located at one twenty-seven, one Lexington Road, which is the former, uh, binding school site. It's approved twenty twenty, uh, spring town meeting. Uh, in terms of, uh, the project and location, um, the property is currently zoned rural residence. Um, and under the zoning, it would be considered a governmental use, which is allowed in all zoning districts by right. Um, the project's currently under review with the Bill Ricker Conservation Commission and Places Associates, uh, their peer reviewer. Um, they've gotten some preliminary com- comments back. Um, and I know Isabel from Conservation, uh, I believe is gonna meet sometime next week to try and iron those all out, get them all on the same page. Um, the site is, uh, a budding Nuttings Lake and does have some wetland considerations. Uh, nothing that we're not familiar with. We went through the process when we demoed the binding school. Um, this project will also need a stormwater management plan, a SWIP plan, um, from the Bill Ricker Board of Health, who will also be reviewing the drainage, site lighting, and any other health-related issues. Um, the project will be requesting, uh, from the pair, uh, from the planning board, a waiver on the peer review, um, in traffic study and and, you know, the thought behind that is, you know, not one, not only the cost, um, but it's currently being peer reviewed, um, for the, it's probably the most major component is the drainage. Um, and in terms of traffic study, we all know is a former site of, uh, the binding school, which really didn't have any, uh, infrastructure or traffic issues. This will be much less intense than an elementary school. Uh, so the property's a one-story building. It's approximately twenty-one thousand four hundred square feet. Of that is a twelve thousand four hundred square foot gymnasium. Um, approximately twenty-one hundred square foot, a high-ceiling multipurpose room, which Dave explained can be divided into, uh, two smaller spaces. An eleven hundred square foot high-ceiling dance fitness room, which will, uh, as Dave is, uh, trying to spec out, have a specific flooring system for, uh, dance and fitness. And then about approximately fifty-three hundred square feet, which is administration, uh, a kitchen area that can also be used for programs, lobby circulation space and the administration offices, and then approximately a five hundred square foot, uh, community meeting room. Uh, here's the site as it sits today. Um, I'll bring up. So that doesn't really show up on the screen, but over here is Dudley Road, I mean Dudley Road, um. To get, no, I'm trying to think of the name of the street, but Doyle, Doyle Ave. And the reason I'm pointing that out is because the next slide is a view pulling out from Doyle Ave. If you, uh, can see right here, this tree is going to be saved. Um, it'll be in a bio-retention area in between the two parking lots, and the building will probably approximately, this isn't working, but, uh, yeah. Um, so that tree there is gonna be saved. Unfortunately, one next to it will not be saved. Um, and then the building will start a little bit to the right, roughly in the area that Dave's pointing out.
Um,
is the site with the former binding school. Um, as you can see, the tree there, that we're going to save. And then this is a view with the former binding, um, coming from Boston Road, heading over towards Middlesex Turnpike. See that slide? So the nice thing is, this is brought on a few projects, but in review it, it complies with all of zoning. Setbacks, building ground coverage, building perimeter green strip, uh, height, green space, um. No, I still. We're just, well, we're saving one good tree. Uh, i- in parking. Um, so in terms of parking, um, the nice thing is, is that Dave essentially controls the property, which means the town controls the property. Um, the building, for building code purposes, is designed with a much higher occupancy that will ever be inspected, uh, expected. Um, and that's due to life safety issues. You wanna make sure that in the event of an emergency or something, there's adequate means of egress. Um, realistically, as Dave said, they'd probably, uh, occupancy limited to two hundred and fifty, um, which equates to, uh, we got a hundred and one, uh, parking spaces, which would give us a a capacity of three hundred and three. So we're a little under it. Also picks up some of the, uh, the baseball fields, which, you know, Dave also, I understand, permits the use of them. Uh, back to, you know, the the pink area is the building as proposed. Um, I think Dave had shown you the kind of master plan that showed basketball courts, um, another parking area, and then the splash pad, um, down the bottom. The splash pad, the tennis courts, and the other parking area, uh, bid alternates in the construction where we put them up to bid. Um, it's been determined that more than likely, we can't afford the other two buildup bid alternates, which would be the parking area and the tennis courts. Um, the splash pad and playground, we all feel is extremely important, has to be delivered with the project. That's the first bid alternate, so we've been doing a lot of value engineering to try and save some of the money in the construction of the building to put towards that splash pad to make sure we can deliver it, um, when the building's completed and open. Um, this is a utility plan that just kind of shows approximations. I know, um, Mike, you had, uh, taken a look at some of the, uh, the plans and we, you know, complete agreement on the electrical run, uh, which is the red line. Um, green is gas, um, yellow is sewer, and then the blue is water. Um, the red, we're still trying to work out for the most efficient route because every linear foot of trench and wire is, has a cost associated with it. Uh, we're also, if you see the the blue extends back down to where the splash pad area is, so at a bare minimum, um, if we can't afford the splash pad, or for some reason it it doesn't go with the project, the water service is in place so that we don't have to dig up the whole site when it eventually does get built. Uh, the next slide shows drainage system, um, and it's probably, so there's a combination of infiltrators and bio-retention. Um, peer reviewer we plan to have at the next meeting to kind of explain this stuff more in depth, so I'm just gonna give you the hundred-foot kind of flyover. Um.
Yeah. But over here is the, uh, it should be a.
Is the underground infiltrator, um, which would sit underneath the splash pad and, um, playground. Is approximately five to six feet difference between the bottom of the, uh, playground foundations to the top of the infiltration pad, so it's it's really infiltrators that it's it's not really concerned that they're sitting on top of each other. Everything on the site, um, drains over to this bio-retention area, and then it picks up, um, an existing drain line that goes to a head wall. It basically dumps into the, uh, the wetlands area, um, and ultimately back into Nuttings Lake. So also as part of this, there's, um, quite a bit of bio-retention. Um, the blue area is kind of a bio-retention cascading falls, which is what that kind of pho- photo- photograph shows. Um, essentially the water perks in the ground, plants clarify it, and the excess spills over into the next bay until it makes its way down and then ultimately, uh, into Nuttings Lake. The long blue strip on the right is a, uh, infiltration trench, which if anybody's been down to P H R, um, rather than put catch basins in all over the parking lot, the parking lot slopes, um, to that bio-retention area, it'll have all kinds of native species that will, uh, filter the water, eventually make it into that blue trench, and then again, travel over to the bio-retention pond in the back, be filtered again, and then ultimately make it out into, um, Nuttings Lake. Uh, so this is a photometric plan showing exterior and building mounted lighting, how far it'll travel. Essentially, all the areas in yellow, uh, come back as zero-foot candles. So you can see that none of the lighting, as proposed, the design technically should, uh, spill off the site. Um, Dave and I were discussing, you can also see that the play structure is in complete darkness. It's all in yellow. Um, so there'll be a discussion on that, on whether that at some point wants to be illuminated, um, or wants to remain the same, but we're making every effort to, uh, make sure that it doesn't become a disturbance in the neighborhood. Um, this big round
area right here is the tree that's gonna be saved, which sits in the middle of the, uh, bio-retention area.
Uh, let's see, next slide. It's a little more detailed plan. This is the architectural floor plan, which shows a lot of construction types. It does contain a ten and ton of information, but essentially, uh, the two two sport basketball courts, multipurpose courts, divider down the center so they can be separated, um, locker rooms and bathrooms, and, you know, Dave did pick up at some point where the, um, the locker rooms and showers will be able to be locked off and not accessible. So if you have an event with, uh, kids running around, they can't get into the showers or the locker area. Those will be able to be, uh, securely closed off. Same with, um, you could lock off, separate kind of the administration side from the gym. So if someone's using just the dance studio at night, they don't have access to the whole building and vice versa. If you get somebody playing basketball, um, they can still access the bathrooms, but they can't get into the rest of the building. Uh, these are exterior elevations. Um, the top would be the view from the parking lot, looking at the building. Entrance on the right, gym with the sloped roof. Um, elevation on the bottom would be if you're standing on the opposite side where the, uh, um, basket, exterior basketball courts would be. Um, top view is the view from, um, Lexington Road. Uh, with the administration being the lower wing and the gym in the back. Uh, if you see, there's a little square box is rooftop equipment, which, um, we're working on to make sure that that's screened from the butters and neighbors and, you know, doesn't carry any sound. Um, and then the bottom is the rear of the gym, uh, from the Nuttings Lakeside. And then these are just some building sections, kind of showing you the volume of the gym on the very top one with the sloped roof, bar joists. Um, then you've got the dance studio. You can see it's got a higher ceiling, exposed bar joists, um, and then on the very end of the top, it's just kind of an elevation of the kitchen wall with kitchen cabinets. You can see the lower ceiling height. Um, the middle left is a section through the building, um, and on the right would be the entrance coming in, administration area, um, and then a view of the dance studio, uh, fitness room with different type of flooring in it. Right next to that, so this would be the picking up the wall of the gym. You're looking back towards Boston Road, uh, and it's just, this is from in the lobbies, so you have, um, storefront glass looking into the studios. Uh, and then this is, if you were in the gym, looking back at the administration. These would be the doors you go into to get to the administration area doors into the male and, uh, female locker rooms. So and then had to put this up because it's pretty exciting. Everyone get your hot air balloon tickets, uh, something different. Um, kudos to Dave for organizing this and putting it together. Um, and then this is, um, it's an earlier rendering. Uh, we value it engineered, you know, quite a bit out, um, to make the project more affordable. One of the things that would improve for cost reasons and for length was this was all gonna be glass storefront, which they're talking to Dave. You don't want windows like that in the gym. Um, especially when the cook, the way the courts are orientated, so someone will always, so that glass won't be there. Um, the siding arrangement will be a little bit different, and we're still working on that. Um, the project's gone through a lot of, bunch of value engineering. Um, it originally had, you know, much different roof line, a lot of jogs in the building that made a great architectural building, but the whole team felt that it's better to, you know, save costs on the constructions and take that money and put it into the programming, you know? Um, Recreation's been working out of a I don't even know what you would call it. A bunker for years.
Self to bunkers.
Yeah, um, so they, the the whole team has the same goal of, you know, get the best bang for the buck, uh, gonna be a great energy-efficient building, modern. Uh, but we certainly haven't gone and done anything really extravagant. Um, any savings would be in depth dumped, you know, back into programming, back into getting this playground and splash pad. So I appreciate, um, planning boarding allowing us to present this preliminarily. We plan to be back next month. Um, if you have any questions, Dave and I would be happy to answer them. Um, and we're gonna have, you know, additional information, um, to present next month. Thank you.
Perfect. Um, so, yeah, when we
If I can just let the record reflect that Kelly Sardina is now present.
Kelly Sardina is now present. All right, welcome, Ms. Sardina.
Hi, guys. Sorry, uh, late. A little bit of migraine wasn't in a good position. Okay, it wasn't doing good. Better now, but sorry, I'm late. Thank you.
Oh. Um, just wanted to, you know, reflect that when they come back next month, we're, you know, they showing us some nice plans there, but we don't really control the everyday, uh, rooms and things like that, so we're, you know, gonna be guided on our site plan review. Um, so that's, uh, you know, uh, town meeting past this. These guys have worked really hard on the layout and, um, uh, that's kind of out of our purview, if you will, for, uh, you know, our review. Uh, but, uh, I, I got a extra preview as a rec commissioner and, um, it helped, uh, with Dave with some comments, uh, you know, estimating-wise, they showed the the line for the electrical conduit to go in the middle of the gymnasium area, and it was like, oh, no, it's on the corner. That's gonna, you know, if they're putting it into an estimating software, they're just gonna roll that off and dump it into a software, and it's gonna give them a certain price. So if we can, you know, make sure it's in the right location at about fifty feet, I think, savings on, you know, like they said, trenching and conduit and wire, so, um, I appreciate all the work they've done. Um, quickly go to the board for any, uh, comments or anything. If you guys have any, it's preliminary, right? So anything we say now, it's just kind of saying it, right? As our, you know, like, uh, hey, you know, like, this is what I saw as I was looking at the plans or
Or or anything you'd like to see.
Right.
We'd certainly like to know it now so we could bring it back to you.
So I'll, uh, start with Mr. Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I don't have anything specific, uh, to ask or to ask for. Um, quick question I do have, though, is it looks like the building isn't gonna be as wide as the binding was. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
So it's not gonna take up as much of the
Not even close, in terms of footprint. It it will be closer to the street than the binding.
Okay.
Um, the setback for the zoning district's thirty-five feet. The building is proposed right now at thirty. Um, however, with grading, no, it's gonna
This meeting is being recorded.
That was not me. Um, so, no, that's
That was me.
Yeah. The, um, good. Just as a general comment, I went to elementary school on this site, and, uh, this is a great use spot. I'd like to see it, um, reused for something like this, and I think it's a great spot. So good luck and forward to hearing more detail. Thank you.
Drew?
So I mean, you guys have pretty much addressed most of my concerns. My only thing actually was with is in regards to, I noticed, you know, uh, was it on here that there's currently, what is it, five handicap spaces?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Well, then what's required?
Yeah, I, yeah, that's what I figured with it, but I noticed that near the splash pad that you don't have any of, you know, the handicap spaces, so would would it be even to
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly relocate one down there.
Yeah, 'cause just 'cause I just noticed that it it's sort of like a space, like there was, the the closest one was kind of on the edge of the the second Yeah. um, one there.
If you see on the plan there, there's on the bottom left, a kind of a hatched-out space, um, which would work perfect as a van space.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what, that's what I was looking. So like, if you could just stick one down there so they could just have access to, um, you know, the pad and and stuff, and, you know, I I know you guys got, was it five, which is more more than, but, you know, I
It perfectly good comment. I mean, it makes sense if someone's going there just specifically to utilize that, then
Yeah. And just trying to get the distance even, you know, I mean, it's not, what would you say the distance between that?
At least a hundred feet.
Yeah.
So that's an easy fix.
Okay. All right, cool. I mean, yeah, I mean, other than, you know, um, seems like water, you like you guys are going to work with the conservation and, and the board of health on, on the, uh, of the, uh, issues there and essentially seems it's all, all the water just going to Nuttings Lake after it's been, uh, filtered out there. So everything else looks, uh, fairly good on it. Um, is there anything that you would, would, um, in terms of incorporate from, let's say the vining in terms of like a name on, on the rec center or no, like?
That really hasn't come up for discussion yet, but
Like, like vining, the, the vining rec center or something like that, something to, to at least remember a part of the area, you know, we've done it with other, you know, with, um, the, you know, where BATV is, you know, right now currently. So we've, we've added, you know, had, had some type of, I know, I know with the, you know, you guys have been just focused on the value engineering, making sure that it's the best rec experience possible, but doesn't hurt to remember a little bit of the history, you know?
That's the, the naming of it, I believe would be a, you know, a function of the board of selection.
Yeah.
Um, I believe, and I'll have to check into it, but I think we saved any, um, plaques that were in the vining.
Yeah.
Um, I know there was one out by the flagpole that was dedicated to somebody on a rock. And then I believe there was like the original construction plaque when they built the vining. Those are still around. They'd be great to incorporate into the building on the site somewhere. Um, even if you put
A couple of bricks if you want them.
I'm sorry.
Gave away bricks when they tore it down. I've got a couple of them.
Yep. Did you get your max two bricks?
No.
Hey, I got some memorable burial. I'll, uh, I'll bring it to the fire station when they put it up. Um, the Yeah.
A comment leave on, but how do you follow that?
Yeah. Um, so yeah, I mean, yeah. So I mean, other than like you got, like you said, that if the, if you could get a handicap space over by the splash pool, we'll incorporate what history you can. I think, uh, I think this is going to turn out to be a great project and waiting to hear, can't wait to hear more when you guys come for us. So it seems like everything's going good. So that's all I have.
Good night, Chris. Ms. Anderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's a very nice project. I think this is long overdue, looks very good and makes total sense where a school was. Now you're going to put a recreation center. Um, the splash pad, good idea with all the heat, uh, island effects everywhere to have an extra spot where people can cool off when it's a really hot, hot day. Um, I was wondering, there's, there's a path there, right? That goes to Middlesex Turnpike.
Yes.
And it stays.
Stays. Um, it, it actually gets a little better than that. Down here.
Yeah.
So they're going to kind of refocus it, but plants and trees, you'll kind of have a, I guess, a little gathering point there where they intersect, but you'll be, there'll be a walkway that goes all the way around.
Yeah. That mean the walkway that goes to Middlesex Turnpike?
Yeah, that comes down this way. That, that's remaining. It's just where it intersects. The site's going to be improved.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Just, I think it's with splash bed there. They're going to want their ice coffees and ice tea.
So hopefully that, that path is going to be really important for us because we're really excited about having our summer camps on site and be able to take that path right to Makosi Beach. So it'll be, it'll be a great
Yeah.
Recreation use.
Even walk, uh, to the Bay Circuit Trail at Middlesex Community College. So yeah, very good. Uh, the one tree that goes, Mr. Parker, I see that there's a lot of new trees along the street. So that makes up for that. Yeah. And the, and the waivers, I think we have to wait till we've opened the meeting, but I don't see, I don't, I don't see much problem with, uh, waiving the peer review since conservation or do the peer review and, and a traffic study while there was already a s- school there. So I think those waivers should not be a problem to grant once the meeting is open. And the balloon ride, I will have to look into it.
And we, we do plan on bringing the peer reviewer to the meeting so that they can, you know, any questions on drainage and stuff.
It's a, it's a taxpayer thing, you know?
Marley, she didn't ask.
I didn't ask what?
Where's the bike rack going to go?
And thank you for, thank you for the refresh.
It's, it's, it's planned to be on there. We just have not determined the location yet.
Oh yeah. I would say closer to the entrance of the sports center.
Yep.
Um,
There is a little kind of pavilion area patio outside from the front entrance.
Yeah. Uh, you can even sacrifice a car parking lot for a parking space. I think it's a, a, a car space is like eight, eight bicycles.
I agree with Marley's. Give her two. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. I agree with you and I think there should be more than just one bike rack. There's, I hope we will have plenty because we know we're going to have a lot of kids there. Dave will keep it very busy.
Sorry. I wanted to know what Mark said.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marley. Sorry.
Would you rather have your bike protected off the pavement and away from vehicles and in a more secure spot?
Uh, I'm not too, uh, I'm not too worried. They'll be careful with the bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you, Marley's. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you for your, uh, your presentation. So I, I heard you say there was, uh, over a hundred parking spots and, uh, and that's great. And that exceeds a capacity that you have, that will be required for the rec center itself. And, uh, and so it sounds to me like we can get rid of two parking spots and make room for that tree, the second tree. So, uh, but, uh, but anyway, um, but I don't love trees as, as much as our chair. Uh, but anyway, um, but going back to parking lot, it's also used for the, for the ball fields. And so I didn't see a parking calculation uh, chart in the plans that we received. And so I will be taking a very keen look at that.
Yeah.
And it, when it comes in, um, the second thing, and please don't, uh, don't take this wrong. I, I appreciate having you, our building commissioner, making a positive presentation on this, advocating for this. But how do we maintain our integrity when it comes down to inspecting this work as it's being done? How do we avoid an apparent conflict of interest?
So that there'll be a separate inspector assigned to this to do, I, I've been participating in the design development, pricing. A separate inspector will be doing a permit review, plan review, issue the permit, and then do all the inspections up until, you know, the project's complete.
Perfect. Just want to, you know, it's a good project. It's important project. We don't, we want to avoid opportunities for dispersions to be cast on this.
Absolutely. Um, I had some of those concerns myself, but, um, I think we can get over that.
Excellent. Very good. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very well-rounded office. So Yes. Yeah. I'm going to get some good, some good inspectors down there. Mr. Samaya.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I mean, I think it's a good presentation. Um, I think most of the board has already asked most of the questions that it needs to be asked, and there's more to be coming down later on. So I'm looking forward to, to seeing the whole thing and ask questions about it.
Great. Um, Ms. Sardina.
I concur with, um, what everybody said, and I mean, I, this is much, this has been, we've been waiting on this for what? Almost five years, if not longer. The kids deserve it. The town deserves it. We're all going to get use of it. So I'm very excited about it. And I know Dave is going to do a fantastic job. I have full confidence in our building inspector. Um, the rest of our planning board, our, uh, conservation, uh, I'm so excited about this taking place. This is probably on my highlight of living in Bill Riker. I know a lot of parents were excited about the high school. This excites me because it, we need it. And I think it's going to get so much use. I just, um, my main thing, which is that would be something with clients is we make sure that we maintain it once we get it done. I know Dave would probably be there cleaning every day, making sure it's maintained. But that's the biggest thing that we make sure that we give him the support that needs to keep the building maintained. But otherwise I'm excited. Good job, guys. Thank you. Thank you to all departments for getting this done.
All right. Does the, uh, staff have any, uh, input or anything that they want to add to the, uh, conversation tonight?
Sure. We have no issues with the administrative waivers that they're requesting for peer review or for the traffic study. As far as peer review goes and Blake's question about, you know, we are the applicant and the reviewer at the same time. So know that you guys are just going to want to take a careful comb and make sure that you see all those zoning standards are compliant, since you're not having a third party double check it for you. So we're, we're up for that.
Unless there's any, uh, Yeah, the, uh, the only other last thing I want to point out is that this is a little, um, different in terms of a town construction project. It's typically what's called design bid build, where you sent out a package of drawings, contractors bid on it, you're kind of stuck with that. Um, this is CM at risk, uh, where we've already hired a contracting firm and they're working with us. The high school was done the same way. Um, they're working with us and pricing stuff as designs come in and they, they're giving us comments that, you know, that's so much more expensive. They're providing alternatives. So it's really, I mean, on a weekly basis, uh, we're getting costs, analyzing stuff, making changes. So this has been, you know, it's been a great group effort with everybody involved. Um, it's evolving. I know, um, you know, David had let me know that one of the concerns and questions was over the repeater room for the fire department, which is, um, essentially there's a, there's a space in the building. If needed, the fire department has to put in a repeater. Um, we've shown it. We've got costs on it, but we're not committed to it. Once the building's up, the fire department will come out, test their radios. Hopefully we don't need it. Um, and then we'll take that savings and apply it to some other type of program. But this project is really, uh, it's great. The town meeting, you know, approved it, approved the budget. Um, but we're really counting nickels and dimes to get the biggest bang for the buck for the community and, uh, people that are going to utilize this. So the faster this moves along, the, uh, more cost savings there. Can I ask? Time in the, uh, comments, if anybody has any moving on before the next meeting, certainly reach out, you can like Katno or Dave or I, and we'll try and, uh, get that for the next meeting and we'll get the missing information that you're still looking forward to make everything, uh, above board. Um, and I will submit. Put together a statement of five regulations. Base assumptions, why I originally did it, those have changed, so I've updated it, um, just to reflect what's actually happening out there.
What's a repeater?
Uh, essentially boosts the fire department signal. So if in an emergency and they had to get in touch with headquarters, um, and we want, it's to make sure that their radios work in the building. If the house school, we had to put one in the basement because, uh, the radio signals couldn't get out from the basement. So but it's really kind of a life safety, emergency response thing, which we don't really believe we'll need, but I agree. Errand on the side of caution and carrying it. So it doesn't become a surprise down the road. It's just something I deal with in my everyday job and, uh, know the cost and, and, and what it takes and, and the reasons why they have it. And, and just as Mark said, I also agree that I don't think that the type of building they're building, uh, and or the location that they're in uh, is going to, you know, require that system to be put in. So, um, great. I appreciate you guys tonight. Thank you. Thank you for, uh, taking the time to hear us. Uh, oh, actually, Ms. Sardina, you had asked for one more item?
No, um, no, I was just, Mark was saying that they're working so much closely on price. So I assume they're probably going to be using some of the students from the tech to help with the building. I sometimes it's got to do with the contractor and they don't want to, but but I, I mean, as far as costs, I think they're going to do the best they can with what we have. But I can't see anybody trying to stretch our budget anymore, but I hate to say it, I'm one who does not like to spend money. This is something I would spend money on. So, but
They have so much, so they have to make it work in that. So
We're going to spend it all.
Well, yeah.
That's what you're supposed to do. We, we gave it to you. So, all right. Um, Joe came for support tonight. Uh, we don't have an open meeting.
It's just something we thought fully done with the vice chair of RecCon. And we go over this at every meeting, you know, if we need to change things or not, but looking forward to getting it done. I mean, I've been on the board since Rockolongo was here. So it's been a long time coming from the bunker down to the Pagan and Risa to where you are now. So hopefully a brand new facility. It'd be great.
So yeah, come back, uh, next month and we'll have the open meeting and those can all get, uh, put into the, into the wrecking. So, all right. And I will, uh, email this PowerPoint presentation to Kat tomorrow and she can distribute it to you. Blake can criticize my, my zoning analysis. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I should say vet. Thank you.
I don't know. The agenda, Mr. Chairman is the presentation of the draft recodified zoning bylaw. We and the, the public have been able to follow and study and review the work of consultant Barrett Planning Group online. And our board was well represented by Mr. Robertson and Mr. Drew. Uh, I feel, um, very confident that, uh, line by line, everything was, uh, reviewed. Uh, this is not going to be set in stone. There's still changes. This is for the preliminary warrant. The final warrant might even look a little bit perfected. But, uh, for now we get, uh, this, it, uh, for fifty years, our zoning bylaw got edited, amended, patched up to the point where it's become an impossible and illogical maze. This recodification is a needed step. It's started in twenty twenty-three. And now with a old document, new document and a crosswalk document to help those who are familiar with the current zoning bylaw. I look forward to this presentation.
Great. I'll, uh, let our staff take this. Catherine?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Marley's. So let me just bring up the presentation slides for a second here. Right. So nothing is pretty with pictures as what you just saw with the rec center, but I will do my best. So overall, the zoning recodification, exactly what you said, Marley's, it is, it's a difficult document to use. And we hear a lot of people talking about economic development and how do we want to make ourselves more business friendly? I would say reader friendly is the first step, whether it's businesses or residents themselves. We, we need to be able to let people open this book and actually understand what our rules are. I'm sure Mark would like a few less phone calls and inquiries in his office from day to day. So with that, we, we cracked it open. So this presentation has four sections. There's a background on why we're doing this, a process as far as how did we get it done? I'll overview how the draft, how the draft itself works. I won't go line by line. It's a hundred thirty pages. You guys can do that on your own on the website. And then as far as what are the next steps to get this done? So throughout this document, I'm going to refer to some other documents. If we are talking about anything, you can find that PDF on the webpage for zoning recodification. The link is on the screen. And now I'll move on. Got to change my view for a second here. There we go. So as far as the background, this really started back in, I think it was twenty twenty-one, the select board goals identified that we really needed to look at the zoning by law and get it fixed up. So as new staff came on board, we hired a consultant, we did the zoning audits. And then that was able to provide us with the diagnostic report, which said just how badly it was or wasn't. And that report has two phases of recommendations. Phase one is the recodification as far as changing things cleanly. And then phase two is going to be the actual policy updates. So phase one, they found things like unbalanced sections, sporadic content, conflicting information and a lot of formatting errors. Um, so the recommendation is to do this recodification process that we're doing now. Improved clarity, internal consistency and organization. Phase two is not what we're doing right now, but I do have it up on the screen as well. That's what we want to get into after the recodification is done. Some of those findings were the rules that we require don't align with our own goals and our plans. Um, it's not the rules that we require don't align with our own goals and our plans. Um, it's not practicable for our existing conditions, like our neighborhoods that were built out long before we said one acre per property. And then we want to be competitive in the regional economy. So if other towns have a zoning by law that says hey, businesses that we want, we're going to let you in, we should also be letting those businesses in. So I wanted to give a couple of examples of the current by law. So this is the very last page of the current book. And on this one page, you're going to see what I highlighted there in yellow. Don't worry, you don't have to read it. You see three yellow highlights. That is section 17, section 18 and section 19. They all together take up one page and I would love to tell you what page that's on, but the formatting itself says it's page 17 17 dot one. It also says it's page three. So that's just a couple of things that we can balance the sections better and we can fix our page number formatting. Another example is if you have a commercial building, a lot of times you guys talk to site plans and you say, any chance you can have solar? So if you want it, just make sure yep, non freestanding on the building. The current by law's table of uses, which is on page five dash 76, and that comes right before page five dash one, by the way. So it says in the table of uses that it needs a special permit in the business, commercial, industrial zones. But if you go to the text of the by law, which is section five HD. And if you think it, I'm missing a number there, I'm not, that section doesn't use numbers, they use letters in that third spot. Then that section says this use is allowed by rights. So that's one topic, three different issues that we need to clean up. So let's fix it, let's make it reader friendly, that's businesses, that's residents, that's everybody. We need to also lay the groundwork to start looking at what policy issues we want to change afterwards. We've hired a consultant, we've created the committee. Committee is comprised of appointees from select board, planning board, the zoning board and the zoning by law review committee. We have the building commissioner and the planning department on it, and then we have two consultants, Judy Barrett and Bob Mitchell. So they have been meeting pretty much monthly. We had our kickoff in December of 2023. In spring of 2024, they've started off with the crosswalk document and that mapped out the new structure as far as what table of contents organization was going to be rearranged into the new table of contents organization. And in the summer of 2024, the consultants started drafting. And fall of 2024, the drafts were shared with the committee, discussed, reviewed. They went back and forth a couple of times and then the third draft is what has been made public. And so this winter, 2024 into 2025 is how we've been having the public review. So as far as that crosswalk document, I just wanted to show the example. On the right side in orange on the screen, you'll see the existing the existing table of contents, but it's out of order because on the left side is the new table of contents. So the new section one is called purpose and authority and it will encompass the old sections, one 17, 18 and 19. Those are those three little baby sentences on the very last page. It's all about the purpose and authority of the by law, so it was just all put together to even out the sections. One thing you'll also see on the crosswalk document is the subsection 1.4 applicability, which was new because we did not have this anywhere in our zoning by law previously. So the consultant flagged that it was missing and got it put in in the right spot. There's a lot of text on this page, I apologize. So the other way that we are tracking changes is through footnotes. So there were some text changes that the consultant needed to make or have suggested that we make. So instead of using track changes or comments through the Word document, she formatted it as footnotes that you'll see in the number in the text. And then the footnote is printed at the bottom of each page. So some of those footnotes are going to explain a change made. For example, the current zoning by law contains no reference to the sources of authority for it. We should probably put in a reference to how we have authority. Other footnote suggested change to be considered where she says this wording is confusing. How do you guys feel about, how do you guys, the committee feel about it? So the committee discussed and they confirmed maybe they accepted some of those changes, maybe they rejected some of them. And then she also takes the time to flag future considerations when we move into phase two, such as our site plan review process. And for anyone that wants to do a detailed review, I do want to make sure that they know we have a spreadsheet for all of the footnotes. You don't have to scroll through every single page, you can look straight at this. If anyone wants to kind of hold up that green and white table in front of you. Actually, the cameras aren't on. Um, but we do have a word a spreadsheet to track all of those. We've also tried to start categorizing them so that way people can be confident, all right, this was already discussed, this was already done. This is a text change and this is why, or no change was made, but we should think about this. So anyone who wants to do a review, we do have that document on the recod webpage. So here's the draft itself. We have 12 sections. And they're going to be basically grouped in a way that we can see. So the first five sections are all the administrative legal things. The next five sections are all of the different rules, our use requirements, required findings for special permits, the dimensional regulations, your nonconforming rights, and then general regulations, which is where we find a lot of the site plan rules at. Sections 11 and 12 are going to be those kind of special cases with overlay districts and special districts. So this again is a lot of text. If you're looking at it, then it can make a lot of sense, but really it's the length that I want you to notice. So this is an example of if you wanted to open a business and the general business zone, if you wanted to lease a spot in O'Conners, for example, can you do it with the business you want? So if you start at the table of contents and you open up the old code in one hand and the new code in the other, the table of contents is going to tell you to go to section five in the old or section six in the new. Once you're in those sections, you'll go to the appropriate subsection, which is five C in the current or six three in the new. Those are running pretty parallel at this point. Then in the new one, it's going to tell you, go look at the table of uses. There's your answer. However, in the old one, you're going to scroll to general business district. You're going to kind of look through the subheadings and try to differentiate if your type of business is a business or a commercial use. You guys go ahead and tell me the difference between those two. And and then you might find it if it's listed. The issue is it's stacked zoning. So what you might find instead is the phrase all uses permitted in the neighborhood business district are permitted in the general business district. So now you have to go back instead of five C six, now you've got to go back to five C five and search for it again under the other district. Hopefully you find it there. If it's also not there, maybe you jump ahead to industrial zoning and see if it's listed there. Maybe it's too intense for this zone, maybe it's not listed. We don't know, you can't find it. So if you can find it, that's where you're going to find your special permit required findings. Now, all of this to say, once you know the current book, you know to just go to the table of uses, which we also have. You don't have to dig around through section five, you can just go to the table of uses at the back of the section once you know that it exists. However, if it requires a special permit, you still have to go back to section five and find it somewhere because that's where your required findings are at. So with this new one, section six three tells you, see appendix A for the table of uses. It tells you immediately to go to that appendix. Also on that table, there's an extra column where we are specifically listing out the exact clause for the special permit findings. So if you need a drive through, it's going to very specifically say the section where drive through required findings are listed. And then some other practice examples, which are much easier to say, if you want to do a home addition, you either go to section seven of the old code for dimensional regulations in that table. Or now you're going to go to section eight and see that table of dimensional regulations. If you have nonconforming rights, you used to go to section 10, now you're going to go to section nine. But it's staying the same. Site plans, the requirement for it has changed the locations instead of five B five, it'll be six two E. But the process is going to still be the same, even though it's in a new location. So again, I invite anyone to do deeper tests. I'm going to pick any scenario, maybe it was a previous application, maybe it's something you want to do to your own house or your own business. And then just open up both books and see what they both say. It should be easier to find the answer in the new one, it certainly should not be harder. And then the answer should be the same. And then I just had to share this image. This is the breakdown of the different sections in each book. So the current by law, the old one is 150 pages on the PDF and it is 19 sections. Over half of that book is one section. And then multiple ones are just one page each. So with the new one, we have 136 pages, there's a lot of double spacing too, so we're hoping the final print can be even smaller. And that is comprised of 12 sections. So as you can see by kind of the visual breakdown, it's a bit more balanced. So what's next is what I'm asking you tonight is to vote to submit the current draft that's online as a preliminary warrant. I know you guys have not taken a lot of time with it, I'm not trying to rush you into it, we do still have time for more reviews. The committee is still meeting as well. What I'm asking is anyone who does want to look and take a deeper dive, get us your comments by April 1st. And that way, when the planning board has their public hearing on April 14th, you have time, you can review and adopt any of those comments and proposed amendments to submit as the final warrant. As far as submitting the final warrants, if you have been looking at our existing by law, you know, there's a lot of red strike through text. We skipped a step and we never adopted a clean version, we just adopted the red line version. So the final warrant will be a clean copy. Um, we do, we are required to submit original text, proposed wording and an explanation for the changes. It does not specifically call out red lines. Uh, we still meet that intent with the crosswalk document and the footnotes for review for anyone following along on those track changes. So as far as the background, we need this recodification for clarity and consistency, it won't change our policies. The process has gone through a careful cutting and pasting of each section and you can use the crosswalk to track that. It's careful text updating where that was needed and you can use the footnotes to track that. As for the document itself, again, the rules are still the same.
Wow.
And that completes it.
All right, so I will um open it up to our board members first that uh sat on this uh subcommittee and give us their uh thoughts on everything and we'll uh then go to the rest of the board for questions if they have any. So uh, Mr. Drew, just start us off.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will say that um having been on this committee since the virtually, I think the beginning of the process, this, this has been very very detailed and very um tedious for the consultants, I'm sure. I don't know how they do this for a living, but uh they did it and what they produced was, or the staff produced was the similar document to what we did with MBTA to track the changes and kind of go through the different, uh, we're calling them footnotes versus questions or whatever, but um it's been very detailed and very eye opening for, quite honestly, I mean, I've looked at different sections of the zoning by law, but never taken the whole thing into account as as a whole. Um, and it is very confusing to use. I don't know how Mark does this every day um and track these things, but um I give him credit for doing so. This is a step, a huge step in the right direction. It's long overdue. You know, having been in town meeting for over 20 years now, I think with, I've seen edits to the zoning bylaws. Um, but I've never really had to use. So this makes it a lot easier to use and I think it's a great step and a great um effort. Similar to what Ms. Sardina said in the previous uh topic about maintenance is that we've got to keep it organized somehow, uh, if this were to go through, uh, because I can see various amendments coming down the road that could lead us to where we ended up with the current zoning bylaws. We have to be very careful of that. I'm sure there's a plan for that, that might be part of phase two, but um it's a great step and I fully support the effort here and and urge the committee, entire board to support the uh preliminary warrant article. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh, thank you, Mr. Drew. Um, yes, uh, this has been a huge, huge effort. Um, but the bottom line is uh what Mr. Drew concluded with, and that is that um, this needs to go forward. Uh, we as a board need to approve this so it can go forward. Are we at 100% today? Absolutely not. Are we close?
Yes.
The uh, you, you heard the comment and I can't over emphasize it. More review is needed. Uh, at the open house that we had, I was very pleased that we had a few folks that came uh to discuss it, but there I highlighted the fact that too often, uh, we go to improve something and by omission or unintentionality, we ended up introducing more errors. And so we really need to do our best, uh, and I'm committed to doing that. Uh, as is our other consultants and other, and uh, planning staff has also taken a look. Um, that we try, do our best to get a good document, a better document than we have today. Um, and I think actually the draft today is better than than what we have, but we don't want to introduce uh problems and cause more challenges. Uh, because, you know, it's, it's very easy to uh make a, make a, a, a slight typo that turns into, you know, conflicting information. And that's what we're trying to avoid here. Um, the key principle was that we really didn't want to make any policy changes. And so to a certain degree, the committee's hands were tied. There were some adjustments that were made that could be construed or viewed as policy changes. And at one point, there was discussion, there'll be a document that's put together that will highlight those because what we don't want to do is have a four hour discussion on what does that mean? Um, and we've had that in the past, and so we're doing our best to try and avoid that. Uh, but circling back, um if you can, uh, take some time to look at it. I, my review is I sit down with the uh, I have the latest versions with me, the original and the current version. And I sit down and I say, okay, what was the old text? Where is it now? And were the adjustments made appropriate and did we miss something? You know, there was a, a uh anyway, there was a very interesting word adjustment that was made. It was an omission, it was just an error, I think it was autocorrect. But it, it was a dramatic change in the intention and in the, in the uh, the, the outcome of the verbiage and the gap was found. It was, it was not intentional, it was an omission and uh, and the consultants fixed that. Uh, and so another set of eyes, six more sets of eyes would be wonderful. Don't have to do the whole thing, just pick a section. Uh, pick an area you're interested in or maybe you have scar from uh, the, the, the meeting. Take a look at it and provide your comments. Uh, anyway, I'm rambling and I'll go ahead and, and that, but bottom line, oh yes, with it, we, we need to have this go forward. It is in, good, you know, uh, it will be finalized for the warrant. It's not, you know, this version is not going to be what's going to go there. This version still doesn't have the, 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 the drawings, et cetera, in it, that will be added and we'll have a, we'll have a good document. Right, thank you.
Chair, can I add one more thing to that?
Of course.
Um, so what Blake and I were both saying is board members, please review, spot check, do whatever, but that does go to the public as well, absolutely. So it is all on the website. I encourage anyone and everyone to just give it one peek, one look, say, all right, well, is the setback for my house still the same thing at least? So whatever it might be that you might look for, make sure that the rule is still the same. If you see something weird, you can email the planning department. If you really want to be awesome and there's no issue, you can email that also, just so we get that that kind of verification and validation, but um, yeah, it definitely goes to the public as well.
Mr. I could just, um, I, I would appreciate maybe highlighting, I know you went over a number of items, but in, in the uh reason that we're doing this is to, to kind of eliminate some of these conflicting information, conflicting, conflicting information uh items. And I, I don't really remember a clear example being, being highlighted in uh, in what you went through in the presentation. So if you wouldn't mind picking, picking your favorite and uh, and highlighting it just so the board can be aware of what, what the examples.
So one of the slides, and I know I said a lot, so I'm sorry if it got lost in there, but my favorite is the one I put in the slide, which is the solar panels for businesses, which is, we say that it's solar panels for businesses, which is, we say that it's special permit and we say that it's permitted by rights, depending on which section of the book you look at. So by going directly to the table of uses, you get that one source of information. Thank you.
All right. So we'll go to the rest of the board. Ms. Sardina?
No, I don't have any comments. Good presentation, Kat. Thank you.
Mr. Tribu?
Oh, I had, I looked at the, the footnotes here. So I actually had just four. So I, I mean, if, if something had said discussed and resolved, I mean, I'm gonna go and look at it later, but it's, it's more of like, all right, well, this is something that if, you know. But the concerns that I have, so I believe it was, you have five footnote, five footnote, nine footnote, 21 and footnote 39. So I'm guessing, I'm assuming that footnote five and nine, is that going to be kind of, it, it looks like footnote nine has already said a phase two. Is, uh, is footnote five going to be kind of in the same food? Cause it says note for future?
Yes. So my favorite footnote is number 21.
Oh, yeah. It's a hilarious footnote.
For China cups at the restaurant.
So it says restaurant required findings and the comment is seriously, how is this enforced? And it's like, it almost kind of sarcastic and
It is. You, I mean, we've all been snickering a little bit here. This is very serious work, but you can't help but laugh at some of the just ridiculous clauses that have gotten in here over time. So we're not looking to change our requirements for restaurants with the recodification process. Now, do we want to look at our restaurant requirements? A lot of people are talking about wanting to incentivize restaurants. Maybe we should be looking at those changes and how to incentivize what we want. That's not what we're doing today.
Yeah. Duly noted. But there is one comment that it looks like it was left blank, which was 39. And that was just, and I'm assuming that will be in the future, but it said elderly housing, district deed restrictions. And the comment that the consultant left was attorney general may disapprove this requirement. So can that be more elaborated on or?
Yes. So we weren't exactly sure how to process that because we're not really suggesting any change to be made, but she's flagging it for, we'll see what the AG says. So we didn't really have a category to bundle that into.
Did they go to the AG or how's that?
No, as far as any zoning change being reviewed by the AG after adoption.
All right. All right. I mean, that's just, it just, it just happened. I just happened to notice the comment kind of popped out to me. So I was just, all right, yeah, that's pretty much it. The, like I said, those, it was just those four, which I do, that we'll probably discuss in the future. But yeah. Other than that, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to vote in favor, get it on. You know, the warrant and, you know, 150 to 136 with a few, you know, less sections. I think that's overall very, very, very good. And it looks, uh, looks a lot better. And so happy to see it through there. So that's it.
Mr. Samaya?
I mean, I, I mean, I, I, I don't really have too much of a comment. I think I trust the eyes of Ed and, and Blake that's been on it for the, for those past, I don't know, few months. I'm looking forward to do some review myself and hopefully not find too many things. But if I do, I'll, I'll present it to the board or to Kat. I'm interested to, to know, I mean, to see what the commissioner has to say about, about it, if he has reviewed it or not, but that's.
Thank you, Mark. Mark Lumiere, building commissioner for the town. First off, I want to thank everybody for the time and effort put into this, especially, you know, Kat and Jane. Even the presentation alone, it's something that's benign and kind of difficult to explain. But it, it has been a long time coming. The solar panel thing that, that Kat brought up, there's a number of contradictions in there. Use car sales, if you look at the table, says it's not allowed, it is allowed. And on all those contradictions, I've always gone back to the body of the text and gone by that rather than the chart. But one of the biggest frustrations for me is even if you have a resident and you're going to cite them for something or you want to point them to a section. It is so difficult to cite a section in the zoning code right now because it's five dot uppercase C dot lowercase c dot uppercase Q dot two dash A. And to follow along, I, I literally have to like flip page by page as I'm writing the sections down. So I think the, the purpose of the exercise was to get it so that anybody could pick it up, navigate it, kind of understand it. And then go to look at some of the changes. I think Chris made the comment, you know, about the footnotes there, but Kat and Jane, and I heard that from Judy all through because she's reading this in her professional opinion. She's just like, wow, how did this get in? I don't think this is, and we've said it, it's already passed the attorney general. We already adopted it. And she just time and time again, like, wow, I can't believe you have this in the zoning. But that's never going to fly. So I, I think those footnotes were just kind of, yes, they've already passed the attorney general review at some point. But this whole thing will go back in again if it passes a town meeting and she's just kind of raising that concern. Then I think she wanted us to kind of push to change it. And we've all said from the very beginning, it's just recodification. We're not going to make major changes. Let's, let's get it so everybody can understand it. I think this is the first step in the process with many more to go after this zoning. So much fun.
All right. Great, perfect. Ms. Henderson?
Everything is being covered. Thank you, Evans, for asking Mr. La Lumiere to also chime in. I'm ready to make a motion.
Oh, I haven't gotten.
I'm sorry, Mr. But I'm ready.
All right. Two simple questions. You pointed out numbering of the pages will have all numerical order. And then my second question, you can answer them both at the same time. Since it's simple, will this be a searchable document? So that people can go in there and, and find what they're looking for much easier than having to scroll through the sections and find it?
Yes. And yes. So as you're reviewing the current, the new draft, when you look at the table of contents and you want, want to go to that section, just click it. It'll take you right there.
Wonderful. I love my specifications when we get them that way and I can go and click right on the specialties and click and it brings me right down 128 pages to where I want to be. So that's, that's great news. All right. So now with that being said, Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to submit the recodified zoning bylaw to the preliminary warrant.
Second.
All right. Since we do have Ms. Sardina on Zoom, we have to do a roll call vote. So I'll start with her. Ms. Sardina?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Samaya?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Mr. Tribu?
Aye.
And I am a yes also to support the work done by our planning board members and other members from zoning board of appeals, select board and our STEAM staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Step one.
Moving on to the minutes.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. La Lumiere. Make a motion to approve the August 28th, 24 minute.
Second.
And Ms. Sardina?
I don't have any questions with them.
There's a motion to approve them? Are you a yes or a no?
Yes, yes.
Very much. Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Mr. Tribu?
Aye.
Mr. Samaya?
Yes.
And Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
I make a motion to approve the November 6th, 2024 minutes.
Second.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Samaya?
Yes.
Ms. Sardina?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Tribu?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
And I am a yes.
I make a motion to approve the November 19th, 2024 minutes.
Second.
Ms. Sardina?
Yes.
Mr. Samaya?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Was I at that meeting, I think, reviewing the minutes? I don't recall what was there, but I would mark this yes on the cover sheet. So maybe I was there and just zoning out. Right. I was there for that one.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Drew? Mr. Tribu?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
I am a yes.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the February 10th, 2025 minutes.
Second.
Ms. Sardina?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Yep.
Mr. Robertson?
I have to abstain from that. That was the one you weren't there. Okay.
Mr. Samaya?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Mr. Tribu?
Aye.
I am a yes.
Other business. Reports from committees?
Take it away.
The, personally, I attended the NIMCOG meeting on February 19th. I was gonna look through the directors' report, but the only thing that stood out was an economic development summit that's going to be at the UKG aka Crosspoint aka Wang Towers. And it's, I think, 20th? March 20th. And actually there are sessions you can sign up for till three o'clock. And realizing that not everybody can make daytime sessions, they have a happy hour at five. Now, if you have time between three and five, I will lead you on a walk. Because there is a, an abandoned railroad, part of it is the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail under the tunnel. And the other side is the aerosol gallery under the connector, which is very fancy. So then there was also a February 26th NMPO meeting, sort of planning for transportation. And I was actually paddling. So I have no report for that. Open space and recreation plan met last week, March 4th. The tough students that are doing a sort of a project for us for practically for free, they presented their work plan and it was all very streamlined. Look forward to see the results. There's six of them that were, I think we originally, there was like four, but now they expanded to six because it's a lot of work. Yeah. But they, all six of them do work. And that's as many committees that I can talk about.
Okay. And we obviously discussed recodification. So I don't believe any other committees are have any other reports at this point. So I think we're good there. So I think the next thing is a staff update. And I'm going to kick it down to our new director of planning and economic development, Catherine Malgeri.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. So just like last month, we actually put this into a PowerPoint to try to track our thoughts a little bit better. All right. So I have a few updates to share with you guys today. Petitioner rezoning is expected in spring town meeting. We want to start talking about some other zoning things too, like starter homes. And then there is an update to our best in Billericay contest. I want to give you guys a quick little peek into some regional economic development planning with advanced technology. And then as always, a heads up on some upcoming applications. So the zoning board received a couple of applications to convert existing single family homes into multifamily. They don't have a process or jurisdiction to do that. So we expect them to deny and dismiss those applications. Those applicants are being told, if you are going to continue with this, then this is the right process for you to follow. So what they do next is up to them, but I want you guys to be aware that that's currently happening. And we might see that submit a petition in time for the March 17th deadline. As far as other zoning changes that you guys might want to start taking on, looking ahead at fall town meeting. The select board did start introducing the idea of a starter homes district, which you can find in 40Y of the MGL. Chair, is it okay for questions?
I had.
So a select board member asked for it to be on their agenda so they could discuss if they liked it or not. And as a united front, they do support it. They also completely identify that submitting zoning would be better from the planning board. So if you guys want to start talking about this, that's on you. Now, our charter allows zoning to be submitted a lot of different ways. Certainly we consider best practice to be from the planning board. So if you guys want to start talking about that, then let's start talking about that.
May I? I'm sorry, Kat. Go ahead. Continue.
Go ahead, Ms. Sardina.
Oh, no, I mean, the 40Ys, I've been looking at this for over, well over a year back, way back in December. And it was something that I shared with Deener and John Barrows. And John had strongly suggested that, you know, a, if Deener wanted to work on it, to work on it with the planning board. And the conversation what we did have was that the planning board at the current time has so much on their plate. And the town has so many issues with our infrastructure that this is something would probably be best to hold off until we can get basically regroup. We still need the long range master plan. We still need our master plan. We had the ADUs. We don't know what's happening with MBTA. I mean, I'm not against starter homes. I mean, I'm not against it at all. But if you read more into the zoning and if you look at other communities, starter homes and this zoning has been around since 2017. And then the state refreshed it in 2020 or 21. Personally, I mean, the research that I've done into it, I don't think at this time it would fit us. Unless it comes later down the road, if we were to purchase land and you say like Swanson Meadows or we, the town was to purchase Tech Park. And we built this and had, had the housing authority control it because otherwise you're taking a district of, an area of land, putting an overlay on it and telling some people, this is all you can do on it. You can only build a starter home. We don't want McMansions. They're not fitting. They're not fitting with the economy. I mean, people, it's impossible. McMansions are even dropping in price. We know builders build them because they get more bang for their buck. You know, but right now, this board, your board, because I won't be with you guys as of next month, you have a lot to work on. Putting more in front of town meeting for zoning is only something, and Ed could probably relate on this one. It's only something that's going to come back and they're going to say, oh, it's like the PUD. We, you did this, you did that. It's as a community, I think some of these things, we need great ideas, but we need to slow down. And not, it's not so much smell the roses, but pick up what's around us and get our infrastructure up and running proper before we open floodgates to continue to just build homes. We need that commercial revenue and we have to figure out how to do that. And I know the planning board is getting everybody's, the select board raised, they're all saying, oh, the, you know, economic development. Well, they're not giving you an opportunity if we keep on throwing housing zoning in. We need to work with the planning board and the select board and our department heads on how to get the town more excited and sell the town to bring in this commercial. We had no commercial base last year.
And I think that's all that we want to start a conversation with. And so I share your thoughts and, you know, we, it'll be something that will go through a process. And like you said, you'll be part of the public process next, uh, next month and, and going forward. And like you said, you'll be part of the public process next, next month and going forward. So I hope that if that becomes a topic of our board, we appreciate you and coming and taking a deep dive with us and adding your input along the process. So thank you, Ms. Sadina.
I mean, hopefully, I think I'll probably be easier to deal with as a public instead of sitting on the board with you guys. Not that I appreciate it and God bless his awful putting up with me. That's the best I could say. I'll be a lot easier as a resident.
Absolutely. Thank you. So yeah, what she said is it's up to you guys if you have the bandwidth, if you want to start working on this. I think you have heard enough comments like, we don't want more McMansion conversions that it is worth looking into. What does that timing look like? You know, share, setting the agendas from month to month when we have time to talk about topics. That's probably how something like this, or what I have coming up on the next slide would be. If you were to really commit to this, I would say you'd want to create a subcommittee because we do have the housing production plan with NIMCOG also in the queue for later in this calendar year. And of course, just like any zoning, there's two main questions to ask. We went through this with the MBTA communities process, which is how is the zoning going to work? What are those bylaw regulations? And then where do you want to put the zoning at when you make it? So those are not easy questions. We do not need to rush it. But even to fall town meeting, it would be kind of full steam ahead. So I do want to flag some other zoning considerations. Some we know about, some might be kind of kicked around new. So our site plan bylaw. We know that phase two of that zoning diagnostic is really looking at, one of the big ones is updating it, setting the right intensity review. So that way you guys aren't missing site plan review on complete parking lot overhauls or a 4,900 square foot building being constructed on vacant land. We do have NIMCOG technical assistance grant lined up for this as well. So they're planning to help us with housing production plan and with our site plan bylaws. And your rules and regs for site plans as well is also bundled in that. So one big cohesive update for that. We keep hearing about restaurants and one of the things that I think we really need to consider is, is our zoning in the right place for it. So do we have the right amount of discretion? Do we have the right amount of expectation? What can a restaurant that wants to come to town actually expect out of our zoning code and the process that we have? If they see our rules say, well, you might tell me no, because my cups aren't China, then they're probably not even going to bother. There's another property they can look at. So if they talk to us, we can say, no, really, that's an old antiquated clause. Just go to zoning board. It'll be fine. But they have no control over that. And those, these applications cost thousands of dollars. So if we want it, we need to allow it. And another idea, as far as people talking about economic development, and we hear a lot of people say they want big businesses. They want big restaurants. They want big retail. Where in the world in town are you supposed to put that? And how much of that big traffic do you really want going through town? So what we're kicking around is putting in a new district called Highway Business. Now, obviously, we haven't talked about this before. This is just kind of a little, this is a nickname I'm calling it. It could be anything if we want to talk about it. But over off of Route 3, allowing by right what you really want, the retail, the restaurants, the hotels, the amusements, the advanced technology, those big amenities for the town, those big taxpayers as well. And all of the traffic they generate is Route 3. It's really an extension of all of those amenities people have learned to go to Burlington for. We have that here in Billerica too. And then of course, we always talk about, well, what about housing? And I think something like this, we probably do need to look at housing being a component as an accessory function, whatever regulations we need to put in there, make it cost effective and viable for a developer. And also, if we're looking at Tech Park, for example, we have single family homes on the other side of Concord Road. So that could be a good kind of visual buffer before you get to the big parking lots and the lights and things like that. All right. That's it for zoning. Enough hard work. Big fun thing, of course, is our Best in Billerica contest. We're still in the middle of our soup contest for the first quarter. If I haven't told you guys yet, our nominations are Augusta's Subs with their stuffed pepper soup, Turnpike Market for their chicken corn chowder, Garrison's for their potato sausage and kale, Newtown Grill and John Ryan's have both put forward their French onion, French onion, excuse me. So there is a Facebook event that you can follow on posts. You feel free to take any pictures and post what you went to. The link is on the screen as well and there's a QR code. So for anyone watching on BATV or on Zoom, grab your smartphone, take a picture of that QR code and it will take you right to a Google form to vote for your favorite. Now, of course, I hope that everyone will take a moment, try a couple of new soups at these local restaurants before you vote. Because that's ultimately the entire point of this is just to raise awareness of how awesome all of our local restaurants already are. And some regional news, we do a lot of attendance with the Middlesex 3 Coalition. That is a collaboration. We have municipalities, property owners and businesses all along Route 3 corridor in Middlesex County. And we talk nothing but economic development. So in this area, Woburn, Billerica, Burlington, Bedford, all of us have these cutting edge industries, clean tech, energy generation, robotics, advanced materials. I did not mention biotech. Yes, we have biotech. Yes, we all know biotech has somewhat plateaued. There's another difference between other advanced tech and biotech, which is the amount of power that biotech needs because of FDA regulations and HVAC. So these are just as clean lab as we're used to seeing with site plans for biotech and GMP. But when you see sites like 161 Concord who can't land their tenant because they can't get the power supply they need. That was old news. They're working on someone else now. But.
But that was an issue?
That was an issue, I've heard. Yes. That is hearsay and secondhand information at this point, to be clear. But so, but we have, I mean, our region is really well situated because we are on Route 3. You can get to Boston, to Worcester or to Manchester really easily, which are these kind of metro advanced tech hubs. So we're right in the middle of that triangle. So right now, Middlesex 3 is looking to apply to the state as a tech hub grant and designation. So they are looking for towns to endorse and support them in that application. And last slide, we are at the end. Upcoming applications. I've mentioned before that 409 Boston Road would be coming in for a mixed use permit. That's an existing multifamily. They're looking to change their ground floor to a coffee shop use. They were just about to apply and what they want to do is actually give extra improvements to their psych circulation and their parking lots. They have what they need already, but they'd like to do it better. But in order to do that, they're going to need a bit more time, maybe try to find some extra space in an adjacent lot and figure that out. The 315, 317, 319 Treble Cove, you've seen that site plan before. That's one of our advanced technology sites you've already approved. They have three U-shaped buildings, if you remember, and then that front building was really close to Dolly Brook. They're coming in for an amendment. So those two back buildings are going to be one parallel building to the front. And because that's going to be shallower, it's going to let the whole thing pull back off of Dolly Brook a little bit more. So they'll be coming in for that modification in the next few weeks. And then 279 Boston, another potential modification coming in. The retail space has found a tenant. And is looking to, well, don't get too excited. Be neutral. So you guys have issued the mixed, you guys have issued the mixed use special permit. So when the restaurant was part of that proposal, that restaurant special permit is issued by you guys. So for the brewery, which is light manufacturing and use category, that's again going to be you guys issuing that special permit for that use and will classify it as a modification to the existing mixed use special permit. They are not changing anything outside. They know that you will be looking at the parking calculations very closely. And they'll get their application in when they get their application in.
Through the chair, if I can ask a question on that. I know there was a conservation meeting tonight regarding the work that's being done over on 279. And I did put a post on it. I was, residents were telling me that they couldn't even get onto the conservation. That for some reason, five years doing Zoom, we still can't, don't, they can't get on the meeting. It just says still connecting. The application, Kat, I don't know if you can help me with this. It says that for 290 Boston Road, that's by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, not by the applicant. So, and then when looking at it, the line, the sore line stuff, what they're putting in is so close to our river. I mean, I don't even know where the last meeting went with conservation because I, you can't hear them. I try to watch it and you can't hear them. So.
Speak to Conservation Commission.
Right. I would say that's our jurisdiction. And if Catherine has her opinion on it, that would be great. But if not, I wouldn't want her to say something that would not be consistent with what another department is adjudicating. So, you know, I appreciate that. But we, we approved the project and that, I'm not sure what that's for, but it's clearly in the conservation's, you know, wheelhouse and not ours. So we'll, we'll look at the brewery next. That's good news. I'm happy to hear that they've been able to market their place to somebody and, and get a prospective tenant. That's great.
Great. Thank you.
All right.
A motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, let's take a moment. You actually stole my thunder a little bit. I wanted to publicly congratulate Kat for her promotion. And thank Kelly for her time on this board. She already announced that she's not running. I'd like to just really thank her for her time and wish her well.
If I may, through the chair, guys, Ed, thank you. I've learned a lot. I have a card for all of yous, but Ed, I've learned a lot from you as like keeping, keeping control. And, and Chris, I mean, sitting next to you has been great sometimes. And other times it has been difficult for both of us, you know, but it has been some good laughs. Mike, unbelievable as far as leader. You took this board from in the very beginning, we had you swearing and then you just like took us all the way. You know, Marlies, you know, I love you to pieces. We always see different sides and we have worked together on things that we still find some type of common ground somewhere down the line will come to things, you know, and I appreciate that. You challenged me and you do your homework, girl. You do do your homework. So Blake, I've learned so much from you. I mean, guys, and Blake, I can't even say how much I've learned from you. Keeping, another one, keeping control, keeping calm. I'm still working on that and that's sometimes being at the age of 60, it's kind of hard to change. You know, and Evans, you were a joy to have on the board and I'm glad, I was happy to serve with you because seeing a new face come on and eager to learn. Jane, I cannot thank you enough. I'm so happy. You were probably a great hire. I mean, come in, you answer questions, you, we get all our material as best as you can. You know, I mean, you get it, you give it to us as soon as you can. And Kat, I am so excited for your position. I mean, I think you're going to knock it out of the park. You're going to do a wonderful job. And I have much confidence in you that when coming forward, you're going to give us the information what's needed. So, and I'm not going away, guys. You'll see me at meetings. I'll just be on the other side, bugging you or sending you a bunch of emails, asking you questions. But thank you very much. It was great to serve with each and every one of yous. And I did walk away learning something in the process.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you for all your hard work and your giving back to the town for the last few years. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Obviously, that's the cat down there. We're very happy for her. She's put in a lot of hard work throughout the last, you know, I lost track of how many months we are here now going on. So we get the MBTA communities blurred everything for all of us and like.
We don't talk about those ones.
So, but congratulations.
Thank you. I do not have a speech or anything specific like Kelly does. So I'll let her keep her thunder. That was great. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, guys.
Motion to adjourn.
Right. Ms. Sadina.
Yes.
Mr. Drew. Mr. Tribu.
Aye.
Ms. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Samaa.
Yes.
And I am a yes.
What do they say? Elvis has left the building.